Good afternoon, everybody. It's Monday, February 6, 2023 at 6:00 PM, and I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. We will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session following executive session. We will be going into executive session for the following three reasons. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Two, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Meeting open law to review the consideration of for of release the executive session meeting minutes for the following executive session meeting dates, and the dates are listed in Attachment A of the agenda. I don't need to read those out, do I? All right, and then third, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do, and this is for the National Opioid Settlement. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, we're now in executive session. Welcome, everybody. We are now back in open session from executive session. We'll start off with Agenda Item 4. This is discussion about whether release, partial release, or not release executive session minutes. Listen to Attachment A as presented in the board, in the board executive session. Sorry, as presented to the board in executive session. So we are going to partial release with some redactions that we agreed to. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to partial release the executive session minutes listed in Attachment A as presented to the board in executive session.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, moving on, so this is additional executive session minutes. So I'll entertain a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes from 1/23/2023.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the regular open session minutes. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes, meeting minutes from 1/23/2023.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Agenda Item 7 is vote on whether to accept donations from Excel Recycling. So we have some people here for that. So is this just in theory, or is there a specific?
So he, Mr. Costa has called me on two separate occasions and has also emailed me requesting that he would like to make some donations to different, different, different things throughout the town, primarily the school. But any, you know, different organizations, and he knows in the past, the history's been that his donations have been returned. So he, before he does that, he wanted to know how the selectman felt about his donations, because as you know, in the past, we have to accept donations.
Yeah, I got some of my thoughts on it. So in the past, we had open litigation against Excel, right, and I can understand how that's kind of, there wasn't the appetite to accept donations from them in that time. We no longer do have open litigation at all. Also, I thought like part of the settlement was to mitigate, you know, we want Excel to mitigate their impact they're having on the town as much as possible. Wouldn't gifts be a part of that kind of agreement or mitigation? Well, that's my thoughts on it.
There are things they can do first. If you go along your lines, if Mr. Costa and Excel are giving gifts to make the town better, I think there are gifts that he can give to the town that don't require money. For instance, instead of the 18 days throughout the summer, give back those 18 days to the fall and wintertime, allow the residents to have barbecues on their properties all weekend throughout the spring and summer. To me, that's a better way to give back to the community than any sort of gift, right? To start, right, as a way of, hey, I'm gonna work with the community now, now this is all behind us in a sense. How about we allow them to use their yards, not have to deal with noise and and extra pollution from all the grinding on the weekends? That's a start. Again, I'm one of three, but that'd be my way of saying, if that's your true intention, let's start giving back to the community that you're primarily affected, which is, you know, the Alexandria High Street in that area, and then have this conversation again down the road. Again, my two cents.
I think they're kind of not connected. I think that, like, if we have a, the settlement agreement is the settlement agreement, right?
Correct.
That we voted on, we all proved that. Like what we're talking about here, I think is just like, in theory, if, say, he wanted to donate, I don't know, like, a new, like, basketball court, like, we're gonna say no to that because there's been, you know, litigation in the past? Like, is that the best for our children?
Yeah, so here's my thought on it is, regardless of what they do, they are a tax-paying business in town. And as you know, and everyone knows, it's been no, I've been, I've been very open about the fact that I don't agree with certain things that happen there. I do agree, you know, it's hard to get the truth out of everything. But if I have a tax-paying business in town that's willing to make a donation for something, I have a hard time not accepting it. That being said, I don't, me personally, I can only talk for me personally, don't feel like taking a donation from someone would change my opinion on what they do. In other words, if something happens that we feel like we need to go after them for,
Oh, yeah, of course.
Then you still go after them for. And I think people are thinking, well, if we say we're gonna accept donations, we're gonna turn a blind eye to something. And I, and I don't feel that that's true on anyone sitting here. So, as a town.
I didn't consider that, like, if the, if our building commission, or the, or like, building inspector came and said, there's a violation here, right? That's totally out of our hands, right? Like, then that's on the building, that's what they do. Right, like, I mean, it wouldn't matter, like, we get, we get a ton of donations from Stop &amp; Shop, right, we accept, we still, if they have any kind of violations, we're gonna, those will be enforced, right? And I don't see the difference there.
I think the difference between the bigger businesses like Stop &amp; Shop versus Excel, right? Again, my opinion, right? I get one vote like you folks do, right? Is, there has been back and forth between this business and the town residents, right? So there is a bit of, so, there is a bit of, not fatigue, but you get a bad taste in your mouth when you hear that word for many people. So there are things that we can, that can be done first before we start saying yes to a basketball court. Of course, if it's at a school, the school committee would be more involved in that than we would, right? Because they own the school as part of their own little island in a sense. So that said, yeah, it's in the past in a sense, but there are still things that we had to fight them for and vice versa, right? To get to where we are today.
You guys got real loud.
You're gonna give me your mics, they, they put them over there. So, I don't know, to my, to my opinion, as far as accepting anything, I think there's work to be done prior to this, right? Do I want a basketball court? Yes. Do I own baseball? Sure. But I also want trust and respect from the community members and the business. And we're working towards that. We're not there yet, in my opinion.
Yeah, I have a hard time turning away a donation from someone that can help our town get better. I mean, it's just simple. I guess this is my business mind coming into play, right? Like, it's just, if someone's willing to give us something, why wouldn't we take it? I don't, it's not gonna change my mind for the better or for the worse on an individual based on whether or not they're giving us a donation. If they're still doing something that is harming the residents, that's a completely separate matter. If they're doing something to help the residents, that's a completely separate matter. So I don't, I have a hard time saying, I'm sorry, Excel, we can't, we can't take your donations. I just.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't, yeah, please.
Steve Tripp, Farley's in the drive. You, you wanna accept it to fix, to put a basketball court?
I just used, I've made that up.
I understand that, but what about fixing it to do something for the residents that are being impacted by it? I mean, they don't even paint the containers. The containers look like ugly freaking things up there. Half of things gray and the rest of white, or yellow. Your problem with the neon place there with all the trash in the woods? Take a walk over on, on Rich Hill Road. When they make the turn to go up Excel's road, they throw all the trash out there in the woods. You're gonna donate money to the town instead of spending your money cleaning up stuff?
And I'm not even sure that, that, that's like, I think the donations in general, right? Like, they could be directly related to mitigating that, you know, impact, or it could be just, I think this is very broad, right? And I think that the question here is like, do we totally not accept anything on principle?
Yeah, until he fixes up, till he can make a good way with the town. Until he can make a good way, I wouldn't accept anything from him.
What's the threshold where you're determined that this is good and this isn't? I guess is my, my question. And I, and I'm not opposing what you're saying. I'm just saying like, okay, he cleans this up, he paints this. Are we good, or is it more? Is it ever gonna be enough? Is it never?
When the sound test passes and attests, then he'll be a good resident? Or when you can figure out where all those fibers, those hazardous fibers that are in my driveway coming from that facility? When you can prove that it's that, then he can be a good, a good neighbor? But until that, it's like, I don't.
Yeah, and I guess, and no offense to you, I think it's gonna be hard for you to ever accept. And it's, this isn't a dig.
What if he fixed everything?
Yeah, I guess I just don't know, regardless of what we do, that you're gonna feel like.
It seems like in your eyes, everything's fixed. It's not fixed.
That's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't agree with that.
You took the money, you took the money from the last thing. Have we done any sound testing?
No, we're, no, we're hiring an engineering firm.
We haven't hired them yet.
No, I put out an RFP, and I did not get any responses.
Correct.
So along those lines, we, 87 Front Street, I think that if you get an independent environmental consultant to come out and do all the work that should be done on that place, and they get a clean bill of health, and everything looks great, and the residents have nothing to worry about, then you say, okay, now you can start doing good for the town.
I, I, I think they're, they're two totally separate.
Yeah. Yes, the settlement agreement was, what, what was it? Twenty-five grand a year to the Board of Selectmen?
Not to the Board, so, into the, I mean, I think it's
To the town?
To the town to be used, you know, at a discretion.
So they have that, you have that, and then you have price per process ton of scrap or something like that that you also get?
Well, right. Yes.
It's, it's a tipping fee.
Really, given the whole atmosphere around Excel, there's no need, you know, for any, for anything else. You know, you have the money to allocate to where, you know, wherever you wanna be. You want a new basketball court? So you've got the money from Excel already to do it. They are trying to buy their way into town.
First of all, just, all I know is just this one line right here.
It looks bad upon bad.
I, I, I don't think I, I understand what you're saying, right? I think I'm decoupling these two things. Where, if they want to, like, they obviously, I agree with you, they're, they're trying to present a better image, right? And, you know, there's been a lot of bad blood.
I would argue that.
Yeah, so, like, why would we turn that down if it can, if it can help our residents in, or, yeah, whatever, regardless of what it is? It's a donation to the fire station, or whatever it is, right?
We have residents who might be being poisoned, that might not show up for years down the road. But I would get an envi, I would hire the environmental consultant that should have been done years ago. We're in to this eight years. There is such a need to get testing done for the sake of the public health. And until that is done, and they get a clean, they get a grade A, I would not accept a single amount of money or generosity, or whatever the heck you wanna call it.
I just don't.
Because if I take, so let's say this, I'm gonna look at it from two separate sides. Excel gives us $10,000 to buy something and then fails. We go after them. Or we don't take anything and Excel passes, right? We didn't get that money, regardless if we have.
Jared, they're not gonna pass.
I, I don't know that, Leah. You don't, you're assuming something, and I, listen, I've been, I've told you guys openly before.
They will be the only facility ever.
I said, in open session before, I need numbers. I want proof, right?
They get it.
Okay, and that's what we're working towards. But what I'm saying is, up until that point, why wouldn't I take money to help our town? Regardless if I take that money or not, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm getting frustrated, but it's, it's me, I just have a hard time going against getting something quote unquote for free.
Like you were just saying, isn't that making, if he's giving you money and you're accepting it, isn't that giving them a good name?
It's not right.
Isn't that cleaning up?
You're adding to their good image, and they might be polluting the hell out of these people, and it's not right.
I just think it's foolish to not take, for the talent, to not take, for, on principle, not take donations.
You're thinking of it as the talent, but you're not thinking of it as a resident that have to put up with it.
Right. I mean, we, we.
I mean, you're gonna spend, spend that money over there putting up a roof over the top of his building, over his facility. Spend the money on that.
Well, I, well, I do agree that there are things they could do. I think they can do things that are more aesthetically pleasing, more things that are locally at their facility. I believe right now, from what we can see, they're building a new vessel to make, to do some sound dampening. Hopefully, that'll mitigate some of the issues. But before, you know, any large scales or any monetary value, there are things they can do in-house that will benefit the immediate residents of that town. And I could, and I can respect both sides of the conversation. But at the same time, you know, hey, we, we've been down this road before. We're at eight years, whatever the amount is. And they're, they are business, right? We'll give them that, they are business, they pay their taxes. They, whether or not they're doing things that are violating any laws, we're, we'll find out, right?
There's that huge question.
Sure.
Until that question is answered sufficiently, you know what? We're not taking any donations from you. You clean up your act, and then we'll, we'll talk about that.
Sure, but I think that's something we would have to go after on a separate issue, right? We're talking with them about painting the containers or whatever, that type of stuff. Is a separate issue than them coming to us and saying, hey, we wanna buy you guys a new car for something.
You don't see that's any.
I'd be like, I don't want it.
I think, so here's the sad part is, I think a lot of people won't even know that it happened. And we're sitting up here telling you that, regardless, I'm not gonna look at Excel as being any different. If they come to us and say, hey, we did this testing, and it comes back bad, then we have to go after.
You don't think it's gonna make them look good? You know, no one's gonna see it. How about the last time when they tried to buy the new camera setup for the school? And Gene Fox had him picture with them all standing in the paper, holding the, holding the big check from Excel? That wasn't trying to make.
They're a company, right? They're a company, and they're, and they're trying to, you know, they're giving back to the community in this situation, right? Obviously.
They could be giving community residents cancer, for Christ's sake.
Like.
Come on.
This is, but this is like, I, we're trying, we're connecting these two things. I mean, I, they're, they're trying, definitely trying to manage their image. It's why, you know, companies do this all the time, right? You know, it's like, I just don't think we should, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater here and just, and just not accept a donation for the town. We don't even know what it is. Like, it could be something like, this is just totally, just in theory, right?
Yeah.
Like, I just, that seems crazy to me.
For another year, 10 years, and never say anything again. They might never offer us anything else again. Who knows?
Well, I guarantee you, it'll be in the paper. You watch him holding his check saying, hey, we donated to the town, so we.
And that was a complete PR stunt, because that system was already paid for.
That's what companies do, though. It's PR, right? Like, I grew to you.
They didn't even bother to tell you that they were using the train place up there to dump their, load their scrap in the trains. Never even said anything about it to the town.
Yep.
But they wanna be good friends, they wanna be good neighbors.
Much, just, just the industrial zone bylaw itself. They're in violation of almost every single one of those, you know? But they're allowed to just operate however they want.
And I think Trevor keeps bringing it up, and I'm, and I, it is what it is. It's two separate issues, right? To your point, if that's the way you feel, that's the way you feel. And I'm not saying I disagree with you on some levels. I'm just saying that it's two separate issues. It's whether or not we accept a donation. And as a businessman, I have a hard time turning something like that away. And, yeah, you know what? It's a good point. Maybe it is a PR stunt, but most of the people won't pay attention or care. There's half the people in this town don't even know what Excel is.
I mean.
I know it bothers you to hear that, Leah, but half the people in this town don't know what Excel is.
That doesn't bother me. What bothers me is that the people who are affected by this place, that nobody seems to care. I mean, I would, why, what's the problem with telling Excel, look, you know, until we get everything that we want as far, and able to label you a clean business in town, at that point, we'll, we'll take donations. But until then, we are not going to be adding to your image. That is up to you.
But like, let me give the example of Stop &amp; Shop, right? There's, there's 600 truck trips a day going in and out of there, causing pollution, causing congestion on our streets, causing, you know, causing all kinds of problems, right? I mean, it's similar, right? But we, but, but we, we have no problem accepting their donations, right? Because this is what companies do.
But didn't you make them use, they, they use the exit ramp now 99% of the time?
I, so, I, I can't, I don't know if that's true, if they use the exit ramp 99% of the time. But I'm just saying, in general, any company, right? Like, like, operating a business has negative effects to the local community it's in all the time, right? There's gonna be generally some kind of negative effects. Them trying to, you know, do something nice for the, for the town? I just don't see those things necessarily.
It's not that anything else in town is not apples to apples.
Yeah.
So don't make that mistake.
That, I mean.
Do not make that mistake.
I understand, this is, that's the prism I see through. Okay. All right, any, any other comments?
For the area, uh, High Street. I mean, if we're gonna go down this road accepting donations, the only donations, if it would be, be in the form of getting mitigation equipment to test air quality, ground, groundwater, and sound. That's the only reason why we should accept anything from Excel, to get those, get that specific equipment to test those, that, those specific things for the surrounding neighborhood.
Nothing to do with it.
And I'm not gonna.
That's the other side, right?
So, and I, I would agree with you on so many levels, except for one, the cost of the equipment, and then having to have someone who knows how to run it, and the upkeep of the equipment. I came from an engineering firm that did a lot of environmental testing. And we would, even from there, would lease out equipment because of the cost to buy, upkeep it and stuff. So, on, in theory, I would love to be able to have us go out and buy something and be able to place it there and say, okay, we're gonna go and test it. And then the problem is, is having, if we ever said, okay, this is beyond levels, having it hold up in court. So I, I agree with you. I wish we could do something that simple. Trust me, I wish it was that simple.
I mean, you got testing done that warrants further testing. It said in the, in the report, it just warrants further testing.
And that's something that we're working on to try, you know, to Deb's point, we've put out the RFP, and unfortunately, in this world, nothing seems to be fast. We are trying to get more stuff done. So it's not, it's not like it's just been forgotten about. I don't want anyone to think this.
This, this equipment has been specific in key areas, like Minnesota. The facility out in Minnesota forced the company to move the location because all the sound and groundwater testing proved it to be negatively to the company, and they were forced to move out. Same thing in California. These kind of companies have all gone through the testing process and have all failed. The exact same company, same type of company.
And, and, and that, I understand, but I'm saying as far as for us buying the equipment and trying to do it, we, it just.
And it's just you actually, the town buys it. I mean, you have an environmental consultant that you hire and you pay them.
Yes, that's what I'm seeing, that's what you need to do. Not, I, I'm sorry, Leah, I'm just saying, based on what he was saying about buying the equipment, and I, I wish we could. I'm just saying that we are on other levels.
The example in Minnesota was that the town forced the company to purchase that equipment and install it around their facility. That was the requirement. Okay, so we should be doing the same for, for Excel, making them pay for this equipment and installing it. And then have it monitored by the, the town health manager or something.
A third party.
Or a third party to monitor it. And that's how, that's how that company in Minnesota, you know, lost, you know, they failed in their tests, and they were forced to move to another location.
So like, but, like, we're talking about right now, like, we have a settlement, we agree, agreement with them, right? Like, that's one thing, and, and when that, if that ever gets renegotiated, then I think these are all really good points that we should bring up into that, just that conversation, right? When they reapply for licenses, things of that nature. I get it, and, and we can look to real situations where this is, you know, helped, totally on board with that. But what we're talking about right now is simply whether to accept totally unrelated donations from a company that, the only reason why this is on the agenda, like, this would be a non-issue generally, it's because this was a big issue when, when they did donate. I think it was, it was money for the school, right?
Yeah.
I, I remember when that happened. So that, that's what we're talking, and that's what we're voting on today, right? So I figure, I don't disagree with your, your, your comments, and I think that those mitigating factors are, you know, some kind of testing would be useful down, down the line. Useful down down the line, but in reality, in the situation we're in right now, like that's not what we're talking about today. You see what I'm saying?
Well, it's all it's all connected.
It's all relative.
It's all it is. It is absolutely relative.
Well, what I'm saying, I can't vote on that today, right? And that's not in front of me. I can't. So that's what I'm saying.
You can you have a, there's a decision behind your vote.
Decision is I think it's foolish to not accept free stuff for the town.
If you're gonna accept it, then I I I say dedicate that to the to the equipment that we need to get.
Well, I don't even know what it is.
Yeah, if it was monetary, then maybe then that would be something a direction we could, you know, agree to go upon. But if it's not, if it's them donating a new. I'm looking and seeing, I keep thinking of cars, right? So they they say, okay, we're gonna donate a new fire truck, pick something. That you can't correlate the two as far as testing. So I don't know what they plan on donating. So in the past, I know that what you said, there was the school.
Right, and we can't dictate to them. They're just gonna decide based on, hey, um, I want, we wanna give ten thousand dollars to the school for the children and.
But why does it have to go through the town?
It has to be accepted by the selectmen, so it would have to come before the board. So prior to, they've asked me on multiple occasions. Because of what has happened in the past, uh, if if the select board would be willing to accept donations. So it's not money that necessarily would come to for the selectmen's discretion to be utilized, but they have to accept it as a as a as a board, so.
Like even I think about like coparts, right? They donated fire hoses, right? To because like, you know, potential fire, like, you know, that mitigates some of that, like that's kind of directly related. You know, I get that, but like, we don't know if this is at all correlated to.
Right, they mentioned the school more than that they'd like to donate to the school, so that was more.
They're gonna use this to to. If anything bad ever happens again and you do end up going back to court with them or whatever, they're gonna use this against you.
I don't think how how I don't understand how any court could look at it and use that against us, how they would correlate it to.
Excel is gonna use it to bolster their image and we're a good neighbor, we're a good citizen.
But if you're doing a good thing, I mean, I I think both things can be true, right? Like if they're doing a good thing for the town, like and they they want credit for that.
So if you kill one end side of the town, it's okay if you make the other end look nice. Doesn't make any sense, does it? We can trash one side of the town, but as long as we clean up the other side, we're good. That's exactly what it comes down to.
You know, for the next year at least, no, we don't accept donations, friend, sorry.
I I just I just I fundamentally disagree, but that's that's. I I think we should vote on this and see how it lies. So I'll extend a motion to accept donations from Excel Recycling.
Motion made.
No, I'll second it. All in favor? Aye, all right. Thank you. All right, now this is moving on, Jenna, item eight is the revised resident privilege stickers policy and procedures. So I looked through that. Is this? What is revised about it? I couldn't see anything that was.
Where you can get them.
It's who where you can get it from, because you're not getting them anywhere other than at the transfer station at this point, the town clerk's office and the town administration offices does not have them.
Do we?
And it also just combines like the it's one sticker, there aren't two different ones.
Yeah, and so that that that's the change. It's just now going forward, just be the transfer station.
Right, it's one sticker covers both and that you get them at the transfer station.
We don't wanna do them at like the boat ramp or anything else.
Well, the boat ramp is having the beach, I mean.
I mean, yeah, but I I was thinking beaches close to the boat ramp.
Over the summer last year, we did have them at the um, boat ramp.
But I could see that being a bad idea too, because then people would be trying to pull in.
Just the beach one, but it's like, it's both, so I think they probably should just go to the transfer station and get them.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
They're both open on the weekends.
All right, and then is there any anything else of note? It all looked pretty straightforward.
Well, it doesn't make sense to like. Get ahead of it and send somebody a sticker every year automatically instead of having them come into town hall. Or one of these transfer stations, it wouldn't make more sense just to. Ship them out every single year so they have them.
And then just facilitating that.
Try and mitigate the amount of people we have that come and go into the town hall for all the business.
Well, they're going to the transfer station, right?
Right, sure.
No, that makes sense. Yeah, because I can see someone like if they, especially for like the transfer station, they can move and then just keep getting free.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're really inconveniencing people if we say that the only place they can get it is the transfer station, it's. Somewhat centrally located, right? It's not that far off to one side more than the other, so. Yeah, so I think the transfer station is a good.
All right, so that makes sense to me. So without, I'll extend a motion to approve the revised resident privilege uh, privileges sticker policy and procedures.
Motion made.
All in favor? All right, now we got a lease schedule for some cruisers.
They go all electric, right?
It's only a matter of time. Yeah, you don't wanna be in a high speed uh, pursuit and then.
Please slow down, um, just need to recharge.
All right. Any any special things of note here, chief, or just straightforward?
Uh, straightforward, I think you, the board of one former, the other, for the past. Fifteen, twenty years, this has been an annual event.
All right, great, with that, so I'll uh, extend a motion to approve the lease schedule for the twenty twenty three. Sorry, fiscal year twenty twenty three, lease of two police cruisers and one Ford Inceptor. Uh, interceptor, that uh, funding was approved for the annual town meeting on six, six, twenty twenty two.
Motion made, second.
All in favor? All right, great. Uh, next is the Patriot Half Marathon, so this is for six seventeen, twenty twenty three. We've we got approval from Fire and Police on this? I don't have any concerns with it. I'm I'm happy it's coming. I think they 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 do it last year, I know they skipped a couple of years for the for COVID, but maybe last year was back.
You have all the details in place already?
Yeah, he has all the the times and they approved it with the.
All right, any questions or concerns? Everyone good? All right, well, that'll extend a motion to approve the Patriot Half Marathon on six seventeen, twenty twenty three.
Motion made, second.
All in favor? And same thing, we have the Cranberry Tri-Fest, this is a triathlon, I'm assuming. Once again, police, fire are good with this? All right, any questions, concerns? All right, with that, I'll extend a motion to approve the Patriot Half Marathon on six seventeen, twenty twenty three.
Motion made, second.
All in favor? This is an interesting one, the town seal. All right.
Get our T-shirts with the town seal and blaze them.
So I read all the. Cheryl, do you wanna speak to this one a little bit? So I kind of read the back and forth on it. So there's a company that is um, printing. You know apparel with the official town seal on it. And then there was some debate whether that uh, is in the public domain or not. Meaning, you know, are they allowed to use our seal without um, authority or without permission? Um, it looks like there's some disagreement between, you know, our council and what they came back with, is that fair?
No, I think they agree that they're they should not.
So I think it's two different, two different school of thoughts there, where um, the town seal is governed by Massachusetts general laws, um. I can tell you the chapter. Don't know off the top of my head, it's uh, chapter forty, section forty seven, as well as the penalties for unauthorized use, which is chapter two sixty eight, section thirty five. Um, town basically says town clerk is the keeper of the seal, um, it should only be used for um, documents and um, authorized. Um, information from the town government, um, and there's a penalty to use with that. They've come back and said. Um, with their uh, legal fees that it's more of a copyright and that the copyright expired in, I believe, nineteen twenty nine. Um, but it's two different, so so.
That made me laugh a lot a little bit.
So I pulled some information, um, town council basically said that I should uh, you know, send out a cease and desist. Letter, but that the Board of Selectmen have authorization over the seal. So that's why we're here before you today. I I kid, I have some backup information for you and, you know, prohibited uses of the of the town seal. Um, basically, you know, the town seal is property of the town, the town is not in the. Business, no pun intended, of um, being a business and creating profit. Um, so it's not something that we could, uh, you know, be selling merchandise and not only devaluating and um. De-authenticating, I would say, for lack of a better word, the importance of the town seal. Town seal should be on um, government documents. And government property, so. The situation at hand is is for you folks to decide, um, I was, uh, you know, in thinking about this, you know, if that's something that. The town may consider possibly not creating an official town seal, but maybe perhaps something that. Um, represents the town of Free Town that with written permission can be authorized to be used with no, um. You know, you you know, no profits or no, you know, take a few sites from Free Town, stick them on some type of an emblem. That way that could be used where it's not duplicating.
Not trying to be official.
You know, because then you're setting also a precedent, because if you allow one person to do it, you know. Setting a precedent for everyone else.
I do like, I like the idea of having like Free Town branded stuff in general.
Yes.
Right? I think that's something like, you know, you see that a lot of communities, but it's like just the fact that it's the it is the actual town seal, like that's the sticking point here, right?
Well, is this a town seal? Like I, excuse me, I. Recently, I went to get passports and they needed birth certificates for all my children, so they wanted one something with a town seal on it. I made a mistake and I brought one in that was a photocopy of it. Federal federal law said, hey, I can't take this, this isn't a town seal, it was just a copy of the town seal. So I only talk about similar to that right now. For instance, we have shirts and and like say Fire Police, they have shirts with the town seal on. Town employees have shirts with town seals on it, it's not just a copy. And an official town seal by the law, the way it reads, is you put it on a public document, it's embraced, it's 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 raised. So by having a copy of it, are we, you know, are we saying two different things, right? Versus the copy versus the official town seal?
So the official town seal or a copy of the town seal where you would see on um, town vehicles, it's all the same thing. So the application of the embossed seal, and that's what you're talking about with vital records. The application of the embossed seal is what signifies a document as official and its content authentic. A facsimile copy of a vital record, for instance, is insufficient for most purposes in the absence of embossment. So that is your official seal, that is your official authentication. You know, when you when you have the brands uh, branded on clothing. It's a form of identification that you're working for the town of Free Town, you represent, you have the authority to represent the town of Free Town. It's it's two different things, so.
Yeah, like I was thinking, like, exactly, that that's that is, that's a important distinction, right? You know, you don't want someone to be. You know, interpreted or like, you know, mistaken for a town employee when if if they're using that nefariously. It's like, like, I always think about like the welcome to, you know, Free Town with like established year, right? Like, that's a different story, right?
Right, and a lot of towns do that, Metapoy's it does it, um, other towns do it, Lakeville's done it before. But again, not having it look so similar. You know, and maybe that's something that, um, the town wishes to create with with maybe like the recreation. Part of it, bring, you know, maybe down the line. I know Four River just did it, um, where they had the, you know, the symbol for Four River for twenty twenty three. And they had a contest and that was the symbol that they were using and something that people can, you know, um, help brand.
With something, make it for kids to submit.
Similarly to what they do for the T-shirts for Fourth of July.
Yeah, exactly. But to, so that would be, because that's yearly, right? Maybe this is something that we do for ten years or something and I. I I don't know. Just trying to think out loud here, kind of off the cuff, but I like the idea of doing something that people can use that's not official. You know, because it, listen, I the fact that someone wants to have something that says Free Town on it means they're proud of their town and why not, right? Happy to have that.
Right, that's what I think of, like you go to Spencer's, you see FBI shirts you can go buy, then you walk around saying you're FBI, right? It's, of course, you're not, but you're essentially representing them one way or the other, um, of course, I'm.
Legality here is it's for profit.
All right, no, I understand that portion of it.
As a government entity, they're, you know, we're not in the business of making a profit.
No, we're not.
And then the authenticity.
And I just like the the reason why I even thought of saying, okay, like, you know, to your point, like we do for Fourth of July. Um, is because I don't wanna have to go out and try and pay someone to design something. So and then I think it adds a little bit more of a touch if a if a resident helps design that, or maybe we put it up.
Or maybe we should create our own and, you know, take some specific, you know, profile rocks no longer there, but that's something that, you know, um. Something that we could possibly think of and and say, although you can't use the official seal, the governmental seal. Of the town of Free Town, but here, if you wanna help brand Free Town, be proud of your town. This is something that you could use with the authorization of.
Yep, yeah, or maybe even one of the local vocational schools or high schools or something, have them do something, come up with something, right? I don't know, I mean, there's stuff we could talk about, but I think it's the in principle, I mean, if we can get something that's similar.
Look at movies do, the movies, you see somebody in military uniform, they're not depicting the exact military uniform, right? They're depicting a version of that military uniform, so maybe that's something that we we go moving forward, right? Is is a version of it, maybe it doesn't say incorporated and they're sixteen.
I think it would have to be a little bit more changes than that, because it's it's extremely similar and if you notice the town seal that we have. Um, it's not a very sharp image, so it has had to be, you know, tweaked a bit. Um, so we don't wanna leave ourselves open for anything that, you know, with a slight variation. Could say, well, it's not, you know, the official town seal because, you know, there's been the font change or the image has been sharpened. I think if it's, if my personal opinion, but that's up to the board's discretion, um. Make it different enough.
No, I agree. I I think making it different is the best way to go is, it should be the distinction between the two.
So, right now, so our vote here is like vote unauthorized use, right? Trying to think what can we actually vote on right now to, I mean, are we gonna send the cease and desist letter?
That was the recommendation of town council. And because I don't normally send those, I asked for um, you know, a template or a copy of of one that we could reference. And it was suggested that um, we get authorization from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I mean, I I hate to like. A little torn on this, I kind of like, I like the idea of selling Free Town brand and stuff, like I said, so, but I I think that like this is a slippery slope.
Well, it's a slippery slope and then, you know, it's. It's the identification authenticity of the town of Free Town.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, so, so I guess. I think my vote here is gonna be, you know, what I'm proposing here is that we. You know, send this, the cease and desist letter and then also develop a a alternative. Uh, logo, uh, you know, and we can work with this person, right? Is that?
Is that something that you, um, since we've had a couple of weeks already to think about this, is that something that you want me to send you proposals or ideas on? Or is that something that you wanna take upon yourselves?
I don't, I don't, I am not an artist. I'm I'm open to suggestions here.
Well, I like the idea, like I think, uh, Jerison has, you know, do we have the the schools or the children help us design the town seal or some have like, you know. Part of the Fourth of July fireworks, submit your town seal and see who gets the most votes at it during the parade, I don't know. I I like the idea.
I do like that idea of getting the community involved. My only concern would be, um, if you've ever judged some of those. And my daughter, actually, my my oldest daughter was actually the first recipient of that, and my second daughter, um, was also a winner. Um, at one point, a few years later, um. With the children of that age, you know, comes a very, um, cartoonish, cartoonish.
That's why I thought about that at first, but then started thinking more about going to like one of the local vocational schools, right? Like if we went to BP and if they have a program, Jeloful, I should know, but I don't, if whether or not they have like a graphic.
They do, they have the graphics, um, graphic arts.
So maybe go to them and give them some ideas, to your point, a great one, profile rock, right? Pick some different things in town.
Have the three urch bridges, you have a lot of things that the third grade is coming for the annual field trips that they.
With that stuff and ask them to come up with something. To incorporate one of these, some of these, all of these, whatever. Um, and then that way it still has the town touch to it and, yeah, I. Then we have one of the schools involved, right? We have kids, theoretically, hopefully, we can get someone from Free Town.
You know, and you could also do it, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not trying to be biased.
Right, that's what I was gonna chime in myself, it was, well, there are things we can do, this mic, you wait for me. So there are things we can do from, to take a a live photo, turn it into a cartoon and take a cartoon to a live photo. Um, start locally, then branch out if needed, but you're absolutely correct, we have great artists in our district, so start there first.
We we, just as a side thought, that could uh, possibly run both ways, so if you decide to have maybe, um. Older students design, you could bring in the element and teaching kids of civic duty and and have like a mock election. Where the children at Free Town Elementary School would decide and have their vote as to what the, you know.
Now we're talking, I like it. All right.
Just an idea to throw out there, but um, that's not the issue at hand right now is that one.
So, yeah, so so really the vote you need here is 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 for us to kind of send the cease and desist.
Correct.
All right, um, and then I'll I will throw in there just the direction to move forward with com- coming up with alternative. Uh, you know, whatever way that is, we we get something on a si- next agenda to kind of nail that down.
Certainly.
All right, so I'll extend a motion to, um, for us to send a, uh, town to send a cease and desist letter to anyone using the town seal. Uh, without authority or without approval. And for also for us to um, move forward with creating an alternative uh, town logo that can be used. Um, for on on a, um, for third parties.
Motion made, second.
All in favor? That was a sloppy, um. What's that? We'll have to, uh, if you could draw one, we'll put it on there. Whenever like people I work with, like Google the town I'm from, they're like, like, what is going, what is, what is a puck?
Think we trim some of the bushes over at the pond, because there's one inside the old, uh. The old, the old plaque there, since you walk in, you trim the hedges, I think it's still there. I think so.
All right, moving on, let's talk about the fire station building subcommittee. All right, so I think we have a group now. Thank you, by the way, everybody for your input on that. All right, so the charges for the fire station subcommittee. So. I'm gonna read the charger here, right? Is that cool with everybody? So the fire station building subcommittee was formed to create committee to oversee the renovation slash addition of the fire station located. At twenty five Bulk Road east of Free Town to meet the existing and future needs of the fire department for the town of Free Town. This committee will uh, work collaboratively with the project manager and architect to develop a final design of the building. That will meet the critical needs of the fire department. Once the architect, architectural design is approved, the committee will oversee the building project, select specific aspects of the building. Projects, i.e. flooring, paint colors, kitchen cabinets, et cetera. Use the project manager and ensure the construction stays within the appropriated budget. The committee will keep the building committee and board of selectmen up uh, updated on the status of the project. That sounds good to me.
Yeah, works for me.
And then just also note, um, the. The established fire station building subcommittee will consist of seven members, so two firefighter representatives, fire chief. Um, one building committee representative, one finance committee representative, town administrator and one selectman. Which equals seven.
A good number, not too big, not small, stuff we've talked about before, right? And a and a little bit of everything, so you get different people looking at it from different ways.
Yep, great, all right, so that all extend a motion to approve the charge for the fire station um, building subcommittee.
Motion made, second.
All in favor? Okay, now moving on to personnel.
Personnel, all right. Discussion and and take the following actions on item agenda number fourteen. Acknowledge the direction of the follow personnel A through F. A, Bowe Replaced as Council of Agent Director effective March second, twenty twenty three. B, Edward P. Walsh, a seasonal plow operator, effective January twenty third, twenty twenty three. C, Michael Souza as Labor Effective, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. D, Orion Silva as Signal Operator, effective January twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. E, Jessica Corre, as Signal Operator, effective two, February eleventh, twenty twenty three. F, Alexander Copeland as Fire, Call Firefighter EMT, effective January twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. All right. Item agenda number fifteen, discussion vote on what to approve the appointments of Michael Brogan, I'm sorry, Mark Brogan, sorry, Mark. Paul Ashley, senior, Mary Eve Zennys Brown, Deborah L. Petty, Harry Ashley Junior, and Robert Alderson to the Fire Station Committee Subcommittee effective January, February sixth, twenty twenty-three through six thirty, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item agenda number sixteen. Discussion vote on which selectman will be appointed to the Fire Station Subcommittee and appoint them effective February sixth, twenty twenty-three through six thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Who wants it?
Rock, paper, scissors?
Um, well, you're on the building committee, uh, so, I don't know. Um.
I mean, I, I can join. I'm, I'm on the building committee. It kind of makes sense for me to.
That's fine, I make.
With it, right?
I, I mean.
Which was firefighter on call firefighter too?
I was, yes.
There you go.
It was a, it was a short window, but I was there.
Yeah.
All right. All right. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Jared Zager as the selectman for the Fire Station Building Subcommittee and appoint him today, February sixth, twenty twenty-three through six thirty, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I always feel re-secaining something or making a motion that's in regards to myself.
All right.
There you go.
Item agenda seventeen, discussion involve what to approve the mutual, I'm sorry, approve the MOA between the town of Free Town and the Free Town Police Association. Before we do that, chief, you have anything to say on that behalf?
Background on this is, uh, this instrument is similar to the uh, the memo you previously executed uh, between the town and the um, the dispatch union. Um, the only difference on this is this one would allow the Board of Selectmen in its sole discretion to also start the candidate at a higher rate on the vacation schedule uh, commensurate with his or her years of continuous full-time experience. Whatever the board does decide on, um, the, the new hiree has, has no grievance. Uh, it's specifically excluded from the grievance process. Um, I, I, I would point out that um, I did a recent survey. Uh, out of the twenty communities in Bristol County, nineteen chiefs were reported actively recruiting people for their police departments. Uh, nationwide, not only in the Commonwealth, we see a smaller pu- pool of applicants. We're all competing for that, that, that smaller pool. So I would, I would respectfully request that you uh, you know, approve this.
I agree with that. I think this gives us more, you know, more oomph out there. It's only a candidate deciding where to go. This could be the factor that changes.
It may very well be, because if you're looking at a, a candidate that wants to leave a, a nearby community that has five or six years on, what's going to get them over here? Well, it's going to be pay. Well, I mean, are they going to come over here to start at step one on midnights? Probably not, but if you're going to, if you're going to recognize their five or six years of full-time service, then I think you have a better shot of doing that.
That makes sense to me.
Some of the benefits of that would be that particular candidate is not going to the academy for six months while we're paying them and trying to backfill the position as well. So there, there, there's, there is an advantage to this.
Yeah, that makes sense too.
Yeah, knowledge of the job is obviously key, right? So having someone come in that can just basically is a quote-unquote.
Goes through a field training program, probably an abbreviated field training program. Yeah, so.
Any other discussion, questions? All right. I entertain a motion to approve the MOA between the town of Free Town and the Free Town Police Association.
I'll make that motion. I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item agenda number eighteen, discussion involve what to approve the additional COLA for Bristol County retirement members. All right, so this is something that Governor Baker signed into law, chapter two thirty-six of, of the act, um, for the Bristol County, which goes from, I believe, three percent to five percent, right? Around eighteen thousand dollars for a retirement, we have about sixty-one people on the retirement system. Roughly, approximately, maybe more, that's in the year. Um, so this will affect them in some way. Margaret, you have anything to add to this? Yeah. Especially if all the community from, from reading it and, and Deb chime in, is if enough communities agree to this, right? This goes, goes into effect or it gets backdated?
Yes, it requires the two-thirds of the towns within the, you know, the Bristol County to approve this retroactive COLA. So it's an additional two percent COLA for the retirees. So I'm not sure then, I did call over there to get some information. I called Ms. Donovan, but she just sent me this email. Um, because it's not, it's not so easy to follow. So I guess then we would have to pay some additional funds in order to cover the retroactive amount of the raise that we give the retirees.
It's my understanding that those COLAs are not on the full pension. It's only on like the first, eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand, yeah.
So there's actually four different um, scenarios where you do nothing. Or you approve the COLA, the additional two percent COLA on the original eighteen thousand dollar base. Or you, you approve the increase of the eighteen thousand dollar base to twenty thousand dollars, but don't approve the COLA. Or you approve the two percent retroactive COLA and increase the base from eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. So there's actually four different scenarios that you can vote to approve. And um, I, I guess that's, it's really all that.
That's a, that's, that's a lot.
Right, because this is eighteen thousand for the people already there, and it goes up to twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty for, for future retirees. So that cap goes up a little bit, about two percent. So that is a, that is a, I don't have the numbers in front of me as far as what that will cost the, the residents. But at the end of the day, I look at it like this, you know, we made a promise to those sixty-one individuals throughout their career and they're, they're in retirement, going through what we're doing while we're working. So they're, they're getting hit a little harder than we are in some, in some ways. So two percent COLA, which I believe we gave working employees a two percent COLA last year, correct?
Yeah, at least.
So.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Fear, fear. Yeah, it is, yeah.
It's not going to break the town to, to give them this, but it definitely will make their lives a little bit easier in some cases when you're working off a fixed income. And that's the sad truth of it when you're retired, right? So there's a fixed, to a certain degree, a fixed income, so.
Yeah, I mean, according to our own um, departments, there, they think that most of the retirees have less than the eighteen thousand. So it would be a little bit less as far as what they actually pay towards. And so, you know, eighteen thousand, I think is the baseline, but in actuality, it looks like we have less than that. So, uh, I'll, I'll put it to motion and.
Yeah.
Take it from there. I entertain a motion to approve the additional COLA for Bristol County retirement members.
Motion made.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, what did you, did you?
So we approved the COLA. So looking at.
Two percent?
Yeah.
Two percent increase.
Oh, yeah, but you need to, you got to do whether or not we want to go retro to.
The step said there were four choices.
No, it's do nothing. Approve a two percent COLA retroactive on the eighteen thousand dollar base. Increase the base to twenty thousand and do no COLA, or approve the retroactive COLA and the base. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just reading over the letter from the Bristol County Retirement System.
And, and if, and approving the COLA retroactively also is going to increase next year, you know, the current budget season. So we're going to have.
So, yeah.
A double win.
I think I see what Carlos thinks. Like, if you read this, the letter here, it says, it says pursuant to Governor Baker signing chapter two thirty-six of the act of two, of into, uh, wow, of twenty twenty-two into law, the Bristol County Retirement Board unanimously voted to allow additional two percent COLA. The board previously voted a three percent COLA effective seven, one, twenty twenty-two, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three on the base amount of eighteen thousand. This additional COLA will be retroactive July first, twenty twenty-two. So I think that's like, that's just that. So that's just saying the two percent retro on the eighteen thousand basis is what, is that, that's what we were voting on. I mean, we, we want, we, we can clear that up and make it a little more, if you want to just, you know, say that.
Yeah.
So two percent retro on eighteen thousand dollar base.
All right.
Retroactive to July first, twenty twenty-two.
I entertain a motion to approve the additional COLA of two percent for the Bristol County retirement members. And this COLA will be retroactive back to July first, twenty twenty-two.
On the eighteen thousand dollar base.
On the eighteen thousand dollar base.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye. All right. Thank you for everyone's help on that. I think that, that was confusing, so cross the board. All right, thank you. So now we're going to sign and then we will adjourn.
Gotta open my pen and all the things for sign.
Liquor license approved previously, the ABCC is now.
Oh, awesome. That's great news.
Which one is that? The?
The oldest on a roster.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah.
Change the name?
He said he had to change the name, but the license is staying current.
Yeah, DBA.
Yeah, he wants to open mid, mid-March, I believe, is his goal.
I don't know.
I'm excited for it. I hope that they, I can go somewhere in town and watch a football game and order a beer.
Yep.
That would be great.
I could care.
It's so small in there though.
Profile.
They're really.
It's okay. On our side.
All right, our side town would be this. Profile's got plenty of TVs, plenty of beer.
Yeah, we need a, we need a nice restaurant in town on our side.
Need a sewer first. And we can have restaurants. If we have a sewer, then we can have restaurants.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So cranberry tri fest.
Cool.
Patriot marathon.
Cool. Cranberry tri.
Always forget it's there. I always run into, stuck in traffic for like an hour. What, what am I doing?
No work.
We wait for one person to ride up.
Um, pan mass challenge. When those guys go, that's a big one because of the, the water flights on the road. So that one is caught up for a while.
We started the budgets, so.
Yay.
In that process.
Little budgets.
You're going to be there Thursday, a Zoom meeting for the regional.
I will be in the air. I fly out. I'm, I'm going to Colorado Thursday.
You get up in the March.
Morning.
We're going to Colorado?
Yeah.
I just saw that. I was looking through my emails right before.
You had to print it to see which.
I had one of each.
Yeah.
And I was like, I put a little sticky note that says, only have one signed. So I'm going to have the right one. You never know. Otherwise I'd have to remember to go back and do it again. Okay, you're good.
We're good, Trevor.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.